Be replaced, so this is to replace that sanitary sewer.
And the most important message on all of these is this is all coming out of the sewer reserve fund, all out of user fees, not a single dollar from taxes.
Any questions? Okay, the next project is the Hot Meadow Center area sewer repairs project. This was in the program last year, over the last year WPCA staff, Tom?
Well, I'm gonna say, it's too bad Tony left, I'm gonna say nice things that this is just a great example of how the WPCA is looking to save money. This was programmed as a full-on replacement a couple of years back, we said before we go much farther, let's really do a closer look at this. This past summer, you may have noticed the WPCA truck working along Route 10, they sent down their camera, they looked, they inspected, they took detailed notes, and the long and the short of it is, the vast majority of it is in a condition which will allow us to line it, rather than replace it, and in the few sections that need extensive repairs, we're gonna repair short sections, 15, 20-foot-long sections. The liner is a process where they literally put out a fiberglass sock using hot water and it uncurls through the pipe, they heat up the water in the pipe, it cures, and it's rock-solid, you're gonna get 50 years out of it. No digging, no disruption, it's a wonderful process, and it's gonna be one of the first times we've used it here in Simsbury, I used it extensively when I was at MDC, just a wonderful way to rebuild Tate sewers with low impact and low cost. One of the main things that the WPCA does is maintain our sewer easements and sewer rights-of-way. Long and short of it, you get trees growing on top of a sewer pipe, the trees with those little tiny root hairs that we talked about earlier, they're gonna find the joints because in that joint is water and nutrients, and that's gonna cause the pipes to fail early. We're looking at $83,000 for a skid steer equipped with a brush cutter and a forestry kit. We actually used one of these when we were doing the brush clearing for the FBI investigation in support of the police activities, phenomenal piece of equipment in terms of its ability to get in. Keep the brush knocked down so that you don't have trees, opens up the rights-of-way, and is going to minimize staff time in doing that job. And again, it is funded out of Sewer Use Fund. Man, now this one is just great now that we're in the middle of lunch. Among the many processes down at the treatment plant, and again, we talked about the biology and the chemistry and the engineering, the measurement for dissolved oxygen in terms of controlling the process is critical. Basically, this is to upgrade the controls, that costs $27,000. Better controls, better process, cleaner water.
All right, any questions? Thank you.
One more. It's just the price, I think, I'm hoping it's gonna be a little less than this. They have a lean-to structure open on one end in which they've been storing their equipment for the WPCA. We wanna make sure that some of this newer equipment, such as that $100,000 skid steer and the attachments are protected from the elements, and we're looking to do that with a, just a basic storage structure at $65,000.
So that's it for first-year projects? There's no other questions?
Does anyone have any questions? You'll see the senior center, we moved out one year because we're not ready to go to build, they're still doing the design, and actually, still site evaluation, we aren't even beyond the site evaluation.
We escalated that cost based on...
I don't believe we did.
We have not, Sean, because we have not gotten, again, current estimates from the new program on the new site.
I thought it was on for $6 million in prior years.
No, it was on for $85,000 last year.
It hasn't changed.
It hasn't changed.
Should I take this out?
Jeff, what number is senior center under?
It's number 20. It's number 20 under Social Services.
Things are really in there, man. I don't think you can make them much smaller now.
All right, it's all you, that's your file. Where's mine?
Sean, are you still on CIP?
Yes. Yeah, we're on the Board of Ed side.
Did you give the copy of the details to Les?
He's good.
She's got me trained.
So I wanted to focus on the first year, we do have a brief PowerPoint to supplement what you have in the detailed sheets for four projects in the '16-'17 fiscal year, and these were approved and forwarded to you by the Board of Education on February 9th. So, these are the four projects that you have sheets on, the district network infrastructure, Henry James Phase 2, and turf field replacement and climate control Phase 2. So the district network infrastructure, one of the aspects of that is our last section of fiber, which is the Latimer Lane, this is the last area where we are leasing fiber, in all other cases, for all seven schools, we have owned fiber, so that's somewhat similar to Public Works wanting to look at taking over the poles. We also wanna continue with upgrading of our overall network. You may recall that last year, we did some wide-area network improvements to our switching capabilities, bringing them up tenfold to a 10-gigabyte speed. This is for our local area networks within all of our buildings. The work basically is done in-house, it's really purchasing the equipment and getting all of the design, again, is on an in-house basis also. Now, the third aspect here, the Simsbury High School server room upgrade, that is really important because the server room is the hub essentially of our network, that then goes out to all of the other schools and also to this building, so it's vastly in need of resizing and really starting over, and there's also a cooling aspect to that, which we're trying to do at the same time, and so that's what that focus would be on. And then lastly, server virtualization, you recall that we did client virtualization, that was the focus of virtualizing all of our school desktops, and this is a server virtualization, similar concept but for the server side of things. Any questions before I move on?
When you say "virtualization," it's basically saving on hardware costs, so over time, there'll be hardware savings down the line by putting some of this in the cloud.
Right, right. Okay, so, Henry James Phase 2, you may recall that in the past summer, we were able to do improvements to portions of our first floor, and this really is trying to take that work, continue with some of the first-floor hallway renovations, and then move up through the stairwells into the second floors to do similar work with improving the lockers, the flooring, and the overall hallways. This would also, as was the case last summer, the first aspect is, once you take up the flooring, there's testing and abatement work that has to be done before you can put the new flooring down. Fire suppression is a large part of this phase, we're a little over 50% of the building, so this would really be focusing us to complete the fire suppression system. The other note here regarding the elevator, I mean, this building is from 1957, and there just haven't been a lot of items replaced, this is something that's important and is something we've been getting pricing on for several years, so it would include replacement of that. And one of the newer aspects of Phase 2, and it came through the site visit that the Board of Education did, and then ultimately, the Board of Finance came and did one also, is just looking at, there are large parts of the building, it's about 130,000 square feet of space, there were areas added on to the north and to the south, so to speak, but there's a lot of areas that just haven't been touched, and so we're trying to gradually move forward. There's areas involving bathrooms, plumbing, looking at the whole gymnasium area, one of the things that we're trying to do here, both the heating and the cooling need to be replaced there. So this is, you know, clearly a maintenance-focused phase, similar to the first one, but I've highlighted at the bottom here in bold that what's obviously been talked about the most over the past 10 years or so since this has been on the CIP, was actually getting to the library media center, getting to, looking at program spaces, science labs, things of that nature. So that, we've now created a third phase, and it's really incorporated into this phase that we have to get the architects to support us, to really work on how best to meet those needs, and start planning, and getting very good cost estimates. That really has to happen simultaneously with this Phase 2 project, so that we're ready for the capital project process again at this time next year, so that everybody is clear on, hey, what's that larger nut, which is a placeholder estimate of $22 million for Phase 3, what is that larger nut about, and why is that important to do, and what would we get, you know, what is the comfort level with those cost estimates? We're trying to include that design work here at the same time, so I almost see it as two simultaneous projects. I wanted to note again that there's a grant for partial reimbursement, as we just did for the first phase, and because of the timing and the state process for that grant, we would have to choose the architect through a designer selection process, and we wouldn't be able to actually get this work done until the summer of 2017, so it's a full year out, even though we're asking for the money so we can start the architectural selection process.
What do you want from there?
So, I'll just give you a few photos, it might be a good stopping point, but these were some of the, you know, some of the key aspects that I've just mentioned. Just a little bit of a visual in our first phase, this was the old main hallway where the office used to be down on the right-hand side, we moved, you know, the office to the front of the building as a part of Phase 1. So we were able to make some improvements to the appearance and upgrade these buildings, these aspects of the building. So I mentioned the sprinkler system, and that's just a little bit about that, so. Questions on Phase 2?
Open up, yeah, you will notice in your capital improvement, there's quite a jump in the 2018 number, so I don't know if you'd like to speak to that a little bit more, or if folks on the Board of Selectmen have a question. We generally focus on the current year, but because of that, it's fairly significant, it did cause some of our projects to get moved out, so you might wanna ask questions at Burke, and because of some of the architectural money that's gonna be spent in the current year is related to the 22 million, so I just wanted to see if there were questions from the board on this.
I can certainly speak to some of the scope change, if you'd like me to, in terms of what that number represents. So, previously, we had looked at Phase 2 to do both some of this maintenance work, although I don't think all of it was detailed out, and focusing on library media center and classroom, science classrooms. So, as a part of that walkthrough, we really looked and said, it's been all this, it's been a decade of trying to plan for this work, we're breaking up in smaller phases, but can you imagine getting through after millions of dollars and not having even talked about touching the family and consumer science and the tech ed wings, and, you know, just walking through this building, just general classrooms were never part of the consideration. And the other area that was revised from a previous design scope was the feeling of the auditorium question should be included in Phase 3. That is, we do not have an auditorium, when the sort of southern wing was built, I guess around '98, I'm not sure if that's the exact year, which included, you know, state-of-the-art art classrooms, band and choral rooms, it was actually built with the anticipation that you could, it's sort of a lobby area where you come in, that would, it was proposed that an auditorium would then come, be able to be built there where you drive in to the entrance for the back parking lot, so that is something that has been placed back in this scope of work. So that's, we're talking about, you know, roughly touching, I believe the architect estimated about 69,000 square feet of that 130,000 square feet by the time you add all of these other aspects to the scope of work.
How big is the auditorium? How big, what square feet is the auditorium?
I believe the estimate was about, I believe it was about 5,000 square feet, but I have to check. So again, we've done that on a very preliminary basis, but just to point out that, you know, we did the high school project in roughly 2005 timeframe, and it's a similar aspect, it's the one school where all of our 7th and 8th graders go to, and if you've really not had the chance, I would encourage you to take a tour, we can certainly arrange for that if there's any problems, just to see that for this town, it's just very, very old and has not been touched, and we'd like to feel that by the time we've finished a renovation project, you would walk through the building and actually feel like you had a relatively modern-looking structure, instead of just, you know, some new wings, but other, you know, but other portions that wouldn't have been touched.
Questions for Burke?
Sheriff? I thought some of the sprinkler system had been done as part of Phase 1.
Yes, some was. We started with the portions of the first-floor hallway where the ceiling was replaced, and we went, that's why I said we're over 50%, we've got a ways to go. We didn't finish the first-floor hallway.
So the rest of the building has no sprinklers in the rest of the building?
No, we have about 50% of the building had been pre, I think it was about 48% had been sprinkled prior to Phase 1. So Phase 1 just started to make more progress, working down that hallway. Now we wanna get to the rest of the first floor and second floor.
I'm just kinda surprised that there isn't sprinklers in the rest of it.
All of our schools are not 100% sprinkled, but certainly, this has been a big part of the goal for this scope of work.
And on the auditorium, right now, the band choral orchestra, they use the high school, what is the...
They do, they do.
And that's working out?
And, you know, I just know that there are definitely a lot of community as well as school uses, and, you know, I'm not gonna speak for others, I just know that they believe that that is a normal part of what you'd find in most middle schools across the state, and it feels like it's something that would be helpful for us with such a strong performing arts and music program, that we should have that option for the folks in Simsbury.
Sean?
So from, I've heard the argument for years now on the science classrooms, and it's always been surrounding programmatic issues, right? The concern, I think, in the past was, we weren't able to keep up with state standards on testing, and, I mean, because those science classrooms were built in the 60s, right?
50s.
I mean, they're antiquated, that always made sense to me, is the same true from the tech ed and the other rooms, as you did the evaluation, that it's, because I get the, you need it aesthetically to look nice, but from a programmatic standpoint, are we falling behind, is that part of the concern?
I think from a programmatic point of view, there's just been a lot of change in technology for tech ed, I mean, when you walk through, with the exception of the woodworking area, I mean, you see sort of an old, all these vestiges of an old, you know, an old shop which now have computers in them, and it's just sort of not in context. Some of it is just the age of the, you know, the kitchen or the cooking areas, I mean, if you just see it, it hasn't been touched in many, many decades, so it's not so much that it's all program-based, it's both program and just time to renovate the space. And one of our focus points with the architects is, how can we, in light of the enrollment projections and space utilization, how can we minimize the amount of new square footage needed for the library media center? So that's why I feel that putting those dollars up front in the process is gonna yield the best, you know, the best product to be able to say to voters, this is the most cost-efficient way to get to where we need to be.
So the only new space you're thinking of is the auditorium? Or are you thinking of your space as...
No, no, this project has always talked about adding square footage for the library media center, which is by far the smallest...
Isn't that on the second floor now?
It is.
So how do you add to that?
So, we've returned to the original concept, which is to go and build out behind what used to be the main office, and that fills in sort of that open space there, so, you know, we're just, we're trying to get them to look at all aspects of that, but that becomes more of the center focal point, the hub of the school is what they'd like to see it as.
And how many square feet is that? I'm sorry.
The footprint that we've, the building envelope, I guess you'd say, is up to 10,000 square feet, we've not determined what that square footage would need to be, and again, that's part of the, the more that you can do with the existing square footage, the less new square footage, so I would not venture to guess without the architects reviewing it thoroughly with us, again, you know, what's the, what is the minimum amount? I would say that there's been some interplay before the auditorium conversation, that some of the reason we were trying to maximize multipurpose aspects of the library media center was, we didn't have a gathering place large enough to do certain events, so we were trying to make that concept of the library media center where you could arrange, open up areas and have sort of a, you know, gathering place, where you wouldn't need that if you had the auditorium. So that's the type of example of, I think, the architects really have to help design and quantify what some of those trade-offs would be.
To Sean's point, I have to say, I've had some personal experience with the programming in the, you know, the family consumer science wing, and I would say that as they have brought the, like, Project Lead the Way down into 8th grade and stuff, those facilities are sorely lacking for the type of technology needs and programming that they're trying to put into that initial step before the kids get to the high school and to the engineering strand, but...
Sheriff, I mean, Sheriff, for those who don't know what Project Lead the Way is, can you just give a quick?
Project Lead the Way is a national program that the schools have, and Burke probably could explain it better, but they have a specific curriculum that goes through all four grades, they take a national exam at the end of the year, and when they get to the high school level, they are actually eligible for college credits, so you can...
And it's an engineering program?
It's an engineering program, yeah.
And there's biomedical, yeah, there's that strand also.
But they have started the program now in 8th grade, so that kids can opt out of some of the arts and family consumer sciences programs to participate in Project Lead the Way, starting in 8th grade.
And I'll just add, on the tech ed note, as someone who attended Henry James far longer ago than I'm going to admit, but also has the second of three children currently attending Henry James, that space that we used and how it is used is completely different and very kind of rigged to function in the new technologies, so. It is, I mean, they've done an admirable job of making it work, but that is quite an area.
Yes. So I skipped ahead, I had forgotten that we had, so we have, just sort of summarizing what we've talked about, since we jumped ahead to the future years, but Phase 3, this is just an outline of what we've spoken about. So certainly, the science, technology, engineering, and math areas, not only for the science classrooms, but as pointed out, the tech ed is now Project Lead the Way and other types of focus, it's not just a shop as people used to think of tech ed. But there's still a lot of other areas, I mean, even just looking at the kitchen and the cafeteria areas, those are just basic areas that haven't been touched, and there is infrastructure there that has to be added into the scope to say that we've renovated Henry James School.
It's part of our stewardship of town assets.
Exactly, exactly, and we'd be well-served to do what is being proposed by Jeff and Tom in terms of taking that longer-term planning approach to all of them, and in fact, some of our Board of Ed members have asked us to do just that.
So this is gonna present an interesting challenge for the six of us, because we've got our top priority in the same year that the Board of Ed has their top priority.
Joe looked at that, Joe, can you address that? That was one of, was part of the reason we moved out some of the town projects, because there's an overall bonding number that we had to be conscious of, but we are aware that there is a problem with the 22 and the 8 at the same year, can you speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the more years that you have in between these larger projects, and the spending profile for both of those projects, I mean, it places a little bit of constriction on your future capital availability. I mean, basically, what's in your five-year plan is almost what you guys could approve over the next eight years, right? But there is capacity for what's out there, it's very tight, but there is capacity. But obviously, it would've been more ideal had we been in a better position last year with the senior center, where we could have approved it and already started spending on it, already bonded on it, and then two years from now, a year from now, two years from now, start the Henry James project.
From a spending point of view, so I'm sorry, of the roughly $2 million for Phase 2, as I pointed out, the real cash flow on that isn't going to be until 2017, sorry, 2017, and then the, you know, the general wisdom I thought that we, which has been spoken about, was that you see the high school debt dropping off in 2018, so it really comes back to a question of how do you choose to fund it and structure your debt, but I think, you know, I think that is certainly the point at which the town has the capability of starting to, and I think with PFM's help, you'd previously showed that we could do both projects, granted this is a larger dollar amount that we're not talking about.
Larger would not be like an order of magnitude of two, yes, it is double.
I mean, we're gonna need some Board of Finance guidance on this, as we have our discussion, because if there's no tolerance for anything but 7% in 10-year bonds, then both of these can't happen, right? There has to be some flexibility.
No, they can happen, they can happen, I mean, you're not bonding 22 million, right? You're gonna bond a number with...
Right, you're gonna bond 31.
Well, no, you bond over time.
No, 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 there's a reimbursement portion of the 22, so the net number itself was...
Yes.
No, it should be...
Reversal is 4.3 million.
Seventeen, seven.
Plus the senior center.
Eight, so 25. All right, so it's over 10 years, it's 2.6 million a year, maybe 2.6 million. Yep, should we start looking at some of the nickel-dime stuff and pulling them out? Yeah, you guys should set your priorities.
That's my point, is if we go up to the max this year, again, we limit our flexibility in the out years, and again, I get that the high school's dropping off, but the high school's a 15-year bond, it's the only time we've done 15 years. So it's, you know, if we're going back to 10, and again, it's not our decision, it's the Board of Finance's, but we need to understand the rules of the road. Again, the project is clearly with merit, and, you know, the senior center clearly has merit as well, and it's gonna be a really tough discussion and decision for the six of us, what we recommend.
Yeah, I would agree, and I think for our credibility, we need to be able to map out and demonstrate how the cash flow does work or doesn't work.
Right.
You know, presenting that going forward. So, yeah, I'm glad to hear that there's scenarios that it all can work out. But I think we really need to be able to know it, articulate it, make sure that we've looked at the best scenarios and.
We've done that in the past with our bond.
That was one of the larger, one of the largest, oh, sorry, one of the biggest disagreements I had with Peter. Because it really falls on the finance director to, to choose how to, how to, how to borrow that money and how it's spent. So there's a lot of assumptions that go into it. It's, that'll be a very long conversation. I can definitely help articulate that. But like some of these projects, take, take for example, the project that Burke just showed before, a smaller portion of this, that work's going to be approved this year. You're going to start the work next year. You're going to have reimbursements coming 12 months after that. You're probably not bonding that for three years.
Right.
So a lot of it depends on how, how you document your assumptions.
Yep.
But there was a lot of that. I mean, this is, this is a stretch. What you have out there is about where you, what you can bond, borrow to. Having said that, I would like there not to be any, any assumptions like that. And it'd be nice if something changes.
Sean, are you reaching out to our bond advisory council? I know that they, last year, Peter really liked to see the spreadsheet. Have we reached out to them yet?
To PFM?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been talking to them, the Board of Finance.
So that'll be presented at the Board of Finance, because that's a Board of Finance financing question.
I just think it's important, even though this is an out year and we technically don't deal with it till next year, what I'm comfortable with this year is going to change based on what I.
Of course.
What I hear for next year, right?
Especially because there's the design component here. There needs to be some advisement.
Well, and my comfortability changes dramatically when the numbers double. I'll be honest. I'm not faulting anybody, but we suddenly went from a $11 million project or $10 million to significantly more. And that, that really impacts us. Just because we can get away with using our credit card doesn't mean it's a good thing for us to be doing. Food for thought.
Any other questions for Burke on this project?
I do not.
Burke, on to the next.
Okay, so we'll go to. Sims High School turf field replacement. So we were one of the earlier towns that had a turf field. Now we've been be one of the earlier ones to do a replacement. We replaced the synthetic track in 2014. And at that time, we'd been working with BSC Group, an architectural firm that specializes in these types of things. And they had advised us that we could get a little bit more time out of our turf field by doing some work to the infill. We did that at the same time that we did, we did the track. But we've seen significant wearing of particular spots. This past summer, we had to actually replace, sort of cut out a, a section. And essentially, they were advising us at the end of this past summer season that we really had to do this and fast track this project because it really needed, in their opinion, to be done this coming summer, 2016. So this is a little different than, than our typical capital schedule, timing. So what, what we were able to do is we were able to get the design work done and get it out to bid. We in fact opened bids recently and we're still reviewing those with the architectural group. We have a number of alternates that we've, that we've got. And the bid was contingent upon funding through the budget process this May. But in order to hit this tight summer, summer schedule window, we had to have the bid process ready, you know, ready to go. Essentially, the turf fabric is, is what is starting to wear. So you, you have the infill that sort of comes up through it, but you can't maintain the shock absorption capabilities when you, you know, when you have turf that is starting to wear to, to the extent that we're starting to see in certain areas. So that's, that's a bit about, about the timeline. And we have a window which we feel comfortable based on the architect's guidance that we, we can have this work done well before the start of the fall, summer, summer practices for fall, for fall sports. So that is the first year program. And if there's any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer.
Do you want to speak to Senator Blumenthal and synthetic fields and what considerations are? Are you considering alternatives there?
Sure.
Where we are with that?
Sure. The folks at the BSC Group, they, they, they gave a, a pretty comprehensive report that was shared with the Board of Ed in terms of considering all types of infills. We've, we've got the most experience nationally as well as locally with this, this concept of crumb rubber infill, which is made from recycled tires. There, there are a number of alternate infill types. The one that we've included as the base bid is something called SBR rubber. It's a coated crumb rubber. It has a green encapsulated, a green coating that covers the, you know, the, the black crumb rubber. And what that does, it's been proven to drastically reduce those field temperatures during, during the warmest summer, summer months. So that was one of the reasons that we felt that that was a good, a good way to go with the base bed. A number of other infills that are out there, there's one called EPDM, which is the same type of rubber that is used on certain roofs, like the central school roof project that we're doing this, this summer. So it's not made of a recycled tires, but it has a very similar property. And it does, it plays and has this similar feel. So we have that in as an alternate. And we're just looking at, at those overall, overall numbers. We have been aware through that, through the process, we've looked at studies going back to 2005, 2006, '07, that were done by the Connecticut Department of Public Health, spoken with Jennifer Kurtanis at the Farmington Valley Health, Health District, who's actually came out of the Department of Public Health and had experience with those, with those studies and has advised me that this newer study that I think many of us have read about, it's trying to kind of bring more of a, of a national closure to what we, you know, what we've been hearing about questions about the potential links. We've not seen a scientific link that says that they're not safe, but we know that there's a strong perception out there. So we have gone with this alternate coated crumb rubber. I've noted that all of our, all of our neighbors, whether it be Westminster, Ethel Walker Fields, Granby's New Fields, Farmington's New Field, Canton's New Field, Bloomfield, Windsor, all went with a, with a crumb rubber type of infill. There's been a number that were approved in the last couple of months. New Milford went with the coated crumb rubber, the one that, that we have in the base bed. And let's see, New Milford, and I believe Hamden went with the coated crumb rubber. So it's going to continue to be a, a question, I guess, in some people's minds until this national study, which is timed, hopefully to, to, to end, I think, by the end of calendar 2016. Helps to alleviate people's concerns. We don't have the luxury of saying, well, let's just wait till the study's done. As I've pointed out, we need to go with this. And something that I'll be bringing the bid pricing back to our Board of Ed and discussing that further. But that's where we're at at this point in time.
Any questions on the turf field for Burke? Okay.
Last project for 1617 is really additional funding for the climate control cooling project. This, this reminds me a bit of what we were talking, what you all were talking about earlier in terms of the complexity of, say, the, the various improvements to the highway, highway public works area, where we started to work with an engineering firm to say, how do we do projects in all seven schools at the same time, some of which are localized and using the ductless split, which goes sort of, you know, a couple of rooms at a time versus RHUs, AHUs, air handling units, when you have to look at, say, a large cafeteria, which becomes a much more complicated project and a much more expensive project. We have, we have just gotten some design proposals back and have ultimately decided that we're going to have to sort of focus more of a, of a building base just to get some things designed and, and bid. We were able to break out some of the ceiling fans for cafeterias at three of our schools. That work's going to be happening over April vacation. And we've done some in-house work. We have some in-house capability with ductless splits at the high school in some key areas where we needed to make sure that the, that the equipment was functioning well, that we were having moisture issues with our copiers. So this one is really just sort of the second chunk of, of funds. We've gone with each school and we've re-prioritized those areas that they would like to focus on because in no case are we really cooling the entire school. So it's a difficult, we want to spend those dollars wisely. And we're anxiously looking forward to getting, getting out to bid. This will just really allow us to say, this is the, this is the total scope for all, for all seven schools. And it's just about $3 million between the two, between the two. So when you really start breaking that into seven schools, it sounds like a lot of money, but it really isn't. So that's essentially what we're asking for is the rest of the funding so that we can plan and move, move forward to carry out these cooling projects.
Any questions on the cooling projects?
I know I ask you this every year, but third floor of the high school?
You've asked me that before? Seriously, I didn't, I didn't recall that that was in every year. But we, we had, the engineering firm that, that we've worked with to do the cost benefit, the auditorium was originally the first priority at the high school. That project alone was well over a million dollars and was just not deemed realistic, given that we're looking at $3 million to spread out through seven schools. They then gave us an estimate of what, what it would cost to do the third floor, and it was in excess of $2 million. So that was off the table. Having, having said that, one of the conversations about re-prioritation, reprioritization that we had with the high school principal was, well, could we start a phased approach to the third floor?
On the sunny side?
So that's something that through this scope of work, we'd like them to, to help us go back and say, well, what, you know, what, what would those numbers be like? But the focus, for example, at Sims High School would be the cafeteria as that one most obvious large space that every student would benefit from. And the price tag on that was, the estimate was about $550,000. So that's why when you start going, you know, building by building, we have to be very careful how we're utilizing these dollars.
Thank you. Any other questions for Burke?
All right, thank you, Burke.
All right.
I think any more questions on capital before we switch to capital non-recurring? All right, Jeff?
Thank you, Burke.
For having me. For lunch?
I was just going to get the summary. I don't know if.
CNN, that doesn't, this doesn't get us in a system, I forgot. It's only a sixth of that.
Oh.
Or fifth of that, I mean.
I got it. Thanks.
All right.
The $70,000, if we don't do it, that's only saving us $12,000 a year.
Capital non-recurring, the fiscal '17 total request is $416,250. I don't have anything for the screen. I think basically what you have in, in front of you is all I can provide today, which is the summary sheet.
Can you just name the projects so that the public has that information?
Sure. It's, the first one was the police department purchased the three patrol vehicles that the chief spoke of earlier today for $87,000. Second project is for the police department, the 40 body cameras at $59,750. The third project is the uninterruptible power supply for the communications division of the police department.
Sure.
At $20,000. The fourth project is for the engineering department. It's a replacement support vehicle for site visits, et cetera. We currently, we recently had to retire a 1980 Ford Explorer with 182,000 miles because it was determined to be unsafe by the Department of Public Works.
[laughing]
There was lots of rust, potential frame failure and.
I would tell you, as much as I get it, you know, because it came from brakes, it was a sad vehicle that had had not just 184,000 miles, 184,000 miles where they were primarily around town miles. And I think it's something to always keep in mind when we're talking about some of these vehicles where there's no highway miles on the majority. It, it was a vehicle that probably should have been replaced two years ago.
Just two.
So this, this $15,000 is actually for a used vehicle that we're hoping to get as a trade-in from the police department for an old police cruiser. If that doesn't work out, we'll go to the auction house and find something appropriate. But I think it's going to, going to work out fine.
It's going to work out.
So that would be plowed back into his revolving purchase account for vehicles, correct, chief?
Use for a lot of it.
Get a vehicle and certainly chief would get some funds for future vehicles.
At the friends and family discount or is that the full rate?
At the friends and family rate or is that the?
That's the CarMax, I think, appraisal price for that, chief?
Just don't let Jeff have the lights and siren, okay?
It's going to look like the Blues Brothers.
We got to give him something.
Welcome to your perks from Sims High.
Actually, I'm driving a loaner car now that would actually serve better. It's a black Crown Vic and it's quite the car.
You may hear.
With about 150 on it. So the next project is the highway plow, plow truck for the public works department at $155,000, $155,000. Tom, you have anything you want to say on that?
Tom.
Tom?
Tom.
Plow truck, $155,000. That's correct.
Does it have lights?
We don't get that clear or anything.
Is it a whole truck? No, actually, it's interesting on our plow trucks is they, they are, in the last couple of years, they have become a little bit more expensive because what, what you're getting in now is actually a plow truck that comes with computer controls for the salt spreading. With the fact that we're spending in round numbers a quarter million dollars here on salt, we want to make sure that we use it wisely. The computer controlled spreader actually monitors the ground speed of the truck and controls the spinner and the chain, which causes the salt to be distributed, to react to that speed. So instead of being based on the engine speed, which would then be affected by going up and down hills, it, it's calibrated, it spreads in a, in a more uniform pattern along the length of the road. And more importantly, we have a record of exactly how much salt was used. So that if for some reason, and we do have a level of discretion to our drivers, but if for some reason one driver was using more salt or less salt, we would know. Then we'd be able to correct that act. We're also getting about 15, 14, 15 years out of these trucks, which is longer than what is recommended by the American Public Works Association, which typically says a replacement in a cycle of 12 years or less.
So this is a replacement?
This is a replacement. Current truck that is replacing is not allowed to be driven without asking the highway superintendent right now. We're violating the law.
The next project is the, for the library, it's a program room technology upgrade for both the programming rooms at the facility. The existing controls on the projection and the audio equipment apparently is outmoded and unreliable. Tom, you might have some Tom, you might have some experience with it. I'm not totally familiar with it.
How more is it unreliable than your turn to be Jeff? I just said nice things about you needing a new car. I think it's just a matter of the age of the technology and, you know, with the amount of use that room gets, I think they really need something that's current enough to speak.
I just want to add, this is below the Board of Finance recommended amount. They like to do a CNR at $10,000, but it's, we felt it was close enough.
Do you know if this will enable SCTV to be able to have live programming from that room?
I do not know that.
I know I got asked that question when we arranged for programming there, and we have done more and more of that in the program room. And, you know, SCTV has to bring in all the equipment, tape it, bring it back to the studio, and then, which we very much appreciate, but if there's technology upgrades that can help both organizations, that would be...
I tell you, assuming it's implemented, we will work with SCTV on that. I know even here today, when we're talking about how the computer hooked up made a difference as to whether or not they would be able to get that signal. And I think wherever possible, not clearly, I think SCTV is a huge resource, and as much as we can integrate them in at certain levels of everybody.
In the past, the problem with getting the programming from there to SCTV was more an issue of having a drop to hook into so you could go live versus a technology within the room.
I know they are, Mark Ornstein tried to explain what they're thinking about, and they are exploring alternative technology, including Raspberry Pis, and I don't fully understand it.
I don't pretend to understand it, I was just wondering if it solved that problem.
Stay away from the Raspberry.
I don't know. But there, I know that they are looking into that, but it does make sense to coordinate with them.
Yeah, that was actually, that had come at that point from Comcast, that's where their signal came from in the past.
Well, it would be good if we could work that out.
Yeah, we can. And, you know, we do have fiber now going by the library. I don't know that it's been brought into the library, Tom.
It has been.
So that's a possibility to improve that SCTV approach. This project definitely does not have any built-in cameras or the supporting technology that I think might be the ideal solution down at the program room, at least the big one.
Right, I mean, I don't know what that includes, but it seems like if you're going to do things in that room, we might want to think about that.
You should.
Okay, the next project is the Performing Arts Center Cushman Utility Vehicle.
Let's not talk about that one.
Upset about that?
Yeah.
Move on.
Sounds good. Number eight is the Public Works Small Pickup Truck built for buildings in ground use. Tom?
Originally, this was scheduled as a replacement with like an F-150 pickup truck just for, especially the night custodians were running around, that type of thing. If you go in the upper parking lot, you will see a Dodge Dakota, which, a picture would be nice. It's almost as sad as Jeff's Explorer was. With this being, it's not a frontline vehicle, and I just want to make that differentiation. Normally, when most of the vehicles for public works, we make a clear distinction between a frontline vehicle and a non-frontline vehicle. And the difference is, if it's a frontline vehicle, it has to work every time and be that higher level of reliability. Because this is not necessarily going to be a frontline vehicle, we downgraded this request from, I think, $22,000 down to its current, is it $12,000?
$11,500.
$11,500, going with a used vehicle.
The next project is a small mower with bagger for the Culture Park and Recreation Department. This replaces an existing small mower replaced back in 2005, so it's about 11-year-old piece of equipment that it's replacing. And that's at $13,000. Last project is a three-quarter ton pickup truck at $32,000 for the Culture Park and Recreation Department. And that replaces an existing vehicle from 2004.
Questions on any of these? Had an initial conversation about the body cameras. Can you just tell us quickly, what is an uninterruptible power supply?
It's essentially a large battery that provides for intermittent power between...
When the power goes off here before the generator kicks on, there's a dead space. If you didn't have the battery to catch it up, you would lose the phones and so forth.
So that's important for 911.
I think it also has something, surge protection.
Yeah, surge protection, yeah.
It gets used for a fraction of a second, but boy, it's an important fraction.
But you're calling.
Yeah, you're on call.
They hung up.
It's a big battery.
It's big.
Any other questions for Jeff?
So just conceptually, so, the Cushman's not in there anymore because we paid cash for that, right, or were you asked to pay cash for that?
The Board of Finance has not yet acted on that.
And if they don't, we'll have to revisit that. And then, potentially the body kit, so there is some, I want to say two different things here, so there is potential capacity in here, so for other things that didn't make the cut, we'll see, you might want to look at that. But two, this is more of a policy question for my five friends up here, is what do we think about not doing CNR this year and saving the $85,000 or $83,000 in the general fund?
I think that...
I mean, as a potential option, I'm not suggesting we not do any of these projects. This is where we would ask for cash or consideration for other means of financing, but, you know, 375, again, I think you presented a responsible budget, I think you cut wherever you could. I think, you know, your funding, you know, staff that we've agreed to, but, you know, we've got to, we've got to think about this from a capital standpoint, and when I looked at this budget, this was, this was the only place I could figure out where to go to find some potential relief or savings if we're not comfortable at 375.
The Board of Finance, I think, has raised this as an issue, and they will be looking at it. The only issue there is if you take out the 85 this year and you reduce the line item, then you have to add it back next year. You don't.
No.
Five years from now. So, I mean...
We can feather that, I mean, there's ways to deal with it, it's...
Yeah. So what is the savings if we did that? Because this is a five-year payback, so we reduce the line item on CNR for next year at $83,000.
$83,250.
Okay.
So it's, I mean, it's a half a percent.
I think it's worth looking at, absolutely. I don't know, there's, they have about 900 to 1,200 that they can spend?
920,000?
So that may be one area that they want to do it, you know, the energy savings that spend to save that Tom presented on the...
My comment has nothing to do with it, these are all projects that are merited. I agree with them, you know, but again, we've got to make some tough decisions.
Are you saying, you're saying the extra money to pay this in cash, so you reduce the line item, or are you saying not do at all?
Exploring both, quite honestly, you know, I don't know, and that's for the Board of Finance to decide what they do and don't want to pay for, but I think we need to decide conceptually, what are we comfortable with? Again, you know, we all agree that engineering is important, is the position for engineering more important than some of these capitals? We've got some tough ranking decisions here, because I don't, at least for myself, I don't foresee the budget going up from 375 at all unless we're finding ways to take things out and put different things in. You know, that's just me speaking, you guys are free to do whatever you think is right, but, you know, again, it's a good budget, Lisa, and I give you credit for it, it's not an easy year, and we've had some challenges in the past that are now showing up, and 375 really is just about the minimum, without considering using up our capital capacity or other things.
It'd be very difficult not to do the three patrol vehicles, because those are essential vehicles to maintenance of the fleet.
Again, but can we do them in cash? I mean, you know, not suggesting we don't do them.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm okay with doing it with cash. I was a little nervous when you say not funding them at all, but if...
And that's, that's not our decision, and that's the thing, is I would, I would recommend to the Board of Finance that, you know, that be priority number one, the plow be priority, whatever the priority be. And again, I would hope that they would, you know, and if they said, all right, no, we're not doing cash, all right, we need to come back and revisit CNR, and, you know, we would have that discussion, but I just, I can't find other ways to come down on the budget other than raising it like this, so.
I think that's an excellent suggestion, actually, to consider.
Well, we could ask Jeff to prioritize the CNR if you like, in consultation with staff.
They're all top priorities, right? The police cars, the plow, I mean, they're all number ones, it's just different department number ones, right? And I'm not trying to pit anybody against each other, that's the opposite I'm trying to do here, but we've all got significant priorities. And it's just, this is a tough one.
The whole budget is tough.
It is.
Do you, I mean, we have...
I don't have any specific questions on any of the projects, sorry, but again, I wanted to, I think we all need to take some time and think about all this, obviously.
If you are thinking about that, do you want me to, we do have a motion to recommend for the Cushman, are you indicating that that should change?
What the Board of Finance did without.
Oh, we already did that.
But I would hope that Mr. Tonner's comments made it to the Board of Finance prior to their approval.
I got to ask, what's the capitulation on the Cushman? Because we had talked about this two weeks ago.
It was indicated that the staff level that...
Where have you been, Joe?
That Silver Farms is dealing with far older Cushmans, and they would be happy to take back the Cushman that is being rejected by the PAC board.
All right, so that question was postured to them before I brought that to you guys, so I'm sure, you know what, we'll talk about it after.
I got it. That was new information here.
Thank you, that was new information.
We heard one story from...
That question was asked before.
Yeah, I asked you in the meeting.
So, it's, yeah, funny, things have a way of coming out of butcher's.
You leave a job, stuff happens.
Again, it's only $15,000, but...
So we have a few things we need to think about. The potential $30,000 in savings if the Board of Finance accepts the recommendation for the spend to save, getting that off, on debt financing. CNR to think about. We will be hearing from the library, we've not yet heard from the library, so we'll get some consideration there as well.
I mean, if we did both the $30,000 on the spend to save, right, plus the 83, I mean, you get 113. Now you're at almost, almost three-quarters of a point.
Yeah.
If we didn't choose to add things back, so, again, I don't know what everybody's comfortable with, but stuff to think about.
I am comfortable using excess funds, recommending to them that they pay cash for some of this if or all, because, I mean, these really were, but even if this board isn't comfortable with, then just doing some. And then the spend to save, you know, I thought about just reducing the budget, but there are needs that I think could be better met with it, that Tom outlined, and they're not want-to spends, they're part of the operating budget, and also part of an important trend to, over time, shift some of those capital expenses back into the operating budget, and here's a way to do it without an additional impact. I realize we could lower the impact. So those are just things to think about over the week, the rest of the weekend, if there is one.
Question for you, Lisa. Would it be possible for Monday night to have a better idea of where we think we're going to be with our potential year-end surplus? And I realize it's a snapshot today, but, you know, do we think it's a dollar? Do we think it's a dollar fifty? Do we think it's $5?
Sean, could you get us those updates? We do, you know, as Tom mentioned earlier this morning, there may be some favorability in both the public works and culture parks and rec because of storm, the storm year we had. But I, so if we could get an update on where we are in favorabilities.
Appreciate that.
Any other additional information you would want for Monday?
Did you get ahold of the police mission?
I did get, I did get an email, I have not heard from him directly, but he did write, "I'm in Hartford, I couldn't get home if I wanted to. The main reason for the cameras is to protect the town from liability in the event of citizen complaints of police misconduct, all the more important as we introduce the use of tasers. Will soon become required as standard practice, also reduces the need for use of firearms, again, reducing risk exposure to the town." Mike, so we can ask him to come in and more fully explain it, but that's the, you know, thumbprint response I got when I left him low.
I don't disagree that if the action happens, it's a potential way to reduce liability, but I guess I have a hard time presuming that we're even going to get to need to use the camera to defend ourselves. That's the part that I'm struggling with.
Well, we do have an excellent police force, so...
Right, again, that's where the question arises more so than any, plus, again, I disagree with them fundamentally, but, yeah, no doubt that they decrease liability, but you've got to have the liability in the first place.
Well, and also, I think we have to keep in mind all the costs that come along with this. This is not just buying camera.
Well, we'll let Mike speak to that, if he's available on Monday.
Sure, it will be an eloquent discussion.
All right. So we'll have Mike, Sean will get us the updated numbers on where we think we're going to be at the end of year capacity. What else are we, anything else? Okay. All right, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We'll give the second to Mike. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Righty.